All right, I guess we can, yeah, I started recording so we can start. So we can pledge everybody's present, our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you, your parliament. Jesus Christ, I just think sometimes it definitely has. No members in the public, so. I know it's probably going to be a shorter meeting, obviously, guys saw preliminary agenda last week. We had a personnel matter resolve itself, so. So here we are with this agenda, any, any comments, Matt, since you're remote? We'll give you the floor.
Sure, I'll start, I just have one brief one. And I learned this weekend that Lynn Dallas, who's had served on our Pension and Benefits Board for many years, passed away unexpectedly this weekend, so, you know, just extending our thanks to her family for all the years of service that Lynn provided and our condolences.
Yeah, Carol Manning emailed Leanne and I to let us know that. Yeah, that, I mean, I, I think she was a reasonably young lady, you know, certainly not well before her time. And just such a, you know. Lynn was, obviously, on the Democratic side, she was a union rep. I believe she had something to do with union work during her career. And even, even if we differed, not that we did, but Lynn was always delightful to work with. She expressed her opinion, she was intelligent. You know, I mean, the Pension and Benefits Board is a really great board to work on, but Lynn was just, she would express her opinion, but always, just always very polite and very nice lady. So I was very sorry to hear that. So, thanks for bringing that up now. Scott?
All right, I have any comments?
No. So, I'll just say a few quick things here. So the annual town meeting is November 28th. As you guys both know, that's a meeting that is called by charter on the fourth Monday of November. So that meeting will be called for 6:30 on November 28th, so. Oh wow, her next meeting is November 8th, all right, so at our next meeting, I will, geez, I knew, that's election day, are you guys going to be available on election day? To have maybe a quick meeting just to call the town meeting?
I can do that.
Even if we do it remotely, Matt, do you think?
Yeah, that should be fair.
I mean, I know it's campaign day, so, you know, so that would be a, I'm just thinking, because I'm going to be in Baton Rouge. Anyway, we'll do an agenda for that day. That is what, an 8:30 meeting, right? So it's on November 8th?
Yes.
So, we will call a meeting that day, I'll try to keep it late, I'm assuming I should be able to make it, I'm assuming so. We'll probably, you know, maybe we all plan on being even remote, virtual, because possibly the only thing I, possibly, will be the call of the annual town meeting. And just so you know, on the annual town meeting, I've kind of been preparing a preliminary agenda. Sometimes we only have to act on and to receive and act upon the reports of the town officials as printed in the annual town report, however, because there are some things coming up for a vote, I thought we would perhaps have a business meeting also. I have seven items that I think we could have on that meeting. One of them is to approve an appropriation in the amount of $5,106.38 for capital from the capital not recurring account for the purposes of upgrading the town's two digital signs, this was a request Larry Hayden made to the Board of Finance. And the Board of Finance approved that request, so that is something that we would act on at our next meeting and then refer to the annual town meeting. The other one is I requested kind of, I don't know if I ran it by this board yet, but we can discuss it at a meeting, at the next meeting or this meeting. It looks like there's going to be about $20,000 worth of electrical work for the gazebo, so that the gazebo is fully wired up and can do information technology, you know, presentations as people may want to do. Also, we want to add a bunch of circuits out there, so that if bands want to plug in and show a video, we're not going to blow anything, there's going to be plenty of outlets, but also plenty of circuits. That's what Sal also explained to me. We're also going to add a few lighting ballards. As you go around the corner to the basketball court, it gets very dark there, so Ray requested, I think, two ballards there that would be lit, and also, next spring, we do plan on putting a patio in front of the new gazebo, and we would run a sidewalk from the current sidewalk in front of Town Hall to the patio. That way, everything is ADA accessible, and there would be two ballards on that little runway that would go from the sidewalk to the patio. And another one is to stain the fence at Whisper Cove. This is something Brad Thorpe brought up at a Board of Selectment meeting, saying that the Whisper Cove fence probably should be stained, it would add to the light. So they, the gentleman agreed to stain it, he said it would probably cost $4,000 to do it, so I did receive a $4,000 appropriation from the Board of Finance, so we would act on that. Then there are several other requests that are actually on our agenda today. And as I explained at our last meeting, for the steep grant, we need to appropriate the funds and then receive reimbursement. What we're not sure about is the legislative earmarks, so I thought we would go to town meeting on all of that, knowing that it'll either be pre-funded or reimbursable. That way, our housekeeping is done, we don't have to worry about it, we can just push forward with the work next year and not have to call a town meeting for it. Lastly, the other item is, I think today at the ARPA meeting, they're going to recommend to the Board of Selectmen a whole host of recommendations that we act upon at our next meeting, so that actually will be a meeting that we're going to have some business. But presumably, since you guys have both attended all these ARPA meetings, unless we have some major discussion, and you can let me know maybe in advance today at the ARPA meeting or now, with the recommendations that ARPA is coming, that the ARPA committee is coming up with, all those recommendations would be on our November 8th meeting to recommend to the annual town meeting. So, does anybody, any questions on that, Matt, do you have any questions on that, Scott?
No, it's all that stuff that Bruce sent out today, so I'm aware of it.
Yeah, does that make sense to you guys? Do you have any objection to moving, the town meeting, it can be a business meeting, there's no, there's nothing that says it can't be a business meeting. Sometimes I try to keep it lighter, but we do have some things that should go to town meeting, and if we can do them now, why not do them?
Yeah, I think that that makes sense.
So I'm preparing that agenda, agenda for the annual town meeting. I will also prepare an agenda for the November 8th meeting and get that out as soon as possible. Probably next week, I'll let Georgie and start working on that, so, that's that. I think I mentioned.
Carl, just while we're on meetings, I'm planning to be out of town on the Tuesday, the 22nd, when we have a four o'clock meeting scheduled in November.
Okay, all right, out of town, so enjoy or?
Out of town and not sure what the service will be, where I'm going to be.
All right, no worries, we'll see what transpires, if anything, outside, we'll just leave it at that, but thanks for letting me know. Yeah, I, yeah, that 8:30 meeting could be interesting for me, because I'm going to be an hour behind and I don't know what my schedule is going to be, so, in any event, just a couple of quick updates. I think I mentioned to you guys that when Larry was digging for a water main at the transfer station, he came across some pollution. This is several months ago, so we've had somebody out there put in some monitoring wells. As it turns out, it was in a gas tank that was taken out of the ground 20 years ago. And apparently, they didn't button it up the way they should have. And Larry started digging, because he's putting in a water main, and he immediately detected the smell of gas, so he immediately called our town engineers, who then called DEEP, and we got somebody out of sight. They did monitoring wells, they figured out what needed to be done, they have a proposed plan. As it turns out, some soil needs to be removed, new soil needs to be brought in, some wells need to remain in place. The entirety of the, I think we're getting away lucky, because the pollution looks very contained. It doesn't look like it's gone to the aquifer over there, which is a blessing. And I think the entirety of the cost is going to be 10,000, about 30, about 30 grand all in, I believe, about 30 grand all in. So. A fair portion of that is being paid for from the contingency account. I think that's a fair use of that fund. I'll just say this much, it could have been a couple hundred thousand, if things didn't go our way. So, I wasn't sure if I mentioned that, I did mention it at a Board of Finance meeting several weeks ago. If you guys, Matt, if you have any questions, just jump in, I won't look for a hand. Electricity pricing, as you guys know, electricity has gone through the roof. We're currently paying about nine cents, we're on a three-year contract that expires at the end of November. We did, through our broker, which is a CCM affiliated broker, we have done a, we conducted a bid, and we got really lousy bids between December and February. So for December, January, and February, we don't have a contract and we're just going to pay the ever-source rate. But then we were able to get into a short-term contract at 11 cents, so not too bad. And that contract, I think, goes maybe February or March to November of next year, in the meantime, if there's any relief in the markets, we'll do another couple auctions, our broker constantly monitors the market, and it'll just buy us some time to look at what our next contract might be. I don't do this stuff on my own anymore, it's too complicated a market. It was great when electricity was 7 and 8 cents, it just isn't anymore, so. The gazebo is going to be delivered, it'll probably get built in one day. As you can see, Larry did the pad out there. You're going to see some other stuff being done out there, some digging, because we're going to run some conduit, obviously, so that we can put in, oh. I thought you were just going to take this remotely, oh, we're going to be putting in some conduit. And so the gazebo is going to go in the first week of November. And I talked to the guy the other day, first or second week, obviously, there's no rush at this point, the rush was to make sure Larry got the pad done. So, that'll go up very shortly. The other thing you see, you'll see is Larry's crew working on right now, is over at the K. It actually is kind of complicated back there in terms of, we had Jeff Jacobson's office do a survey, because you have the new restaurant, the Japanese restaurant, you have the financial advisor, then you have town land, and they all kind of come together. So we did a survey, and we shared the survey with all three property owners, so everybody knows where they can go. And the K was able to get, is getting a new chiller, because that chiller is shot and apparently not cooling the building very well. It's about $120,000, but they did it through NAA grants. So, they did it through, you know, they got corporate, those corporate donations, corporate tax returns. So, which is great, the K's going to, and Larry is preparing the pad for the chiller, and they're also going to have a storage unit out there, they need storage. And so they cleared that with Chris Costa and everything, and you know, the K has just come a long way, it, you know. I don't know if you guys know, but it was a mess after it was built. It was blood, sweat, and tears to get it built, but everything about it was wrong when it got built. They turned on the heat in one office, and then with the heat upstairs and opposite side of the building, I mean, it was like, it was a mess, and there was a dispute with the contractor, whatever. And there's just been so much work done there, and it's just performing at a very top level as a building. They've gotten many, many grants, obviously, I thank both of you and prior boards of Selectmen, because we've invested a lot of money in the K. And I really think every dime we put into it is worth it, it's just an amazing treasure and asset on Main Street. But they are now getting a new chiller and putting in a storage unit, and you'll see that happening as you come in that side driveway over there. One of the other last things I'll talk about is, when we got the lights approval at the high school, there were some conditions that went along with it, and one of those was to stop people from parking on Ingham Hill Road so that we could be good neighbors to those folks. Well, we put in a fence, we put in a Merritt Parkway-style fence, very attractive, so that no one can park on the side of it. The next thing we have to do is build a screen, so if you drive by there, you'll see that we had 30, I think they all got delivered today, 33 arbivores. So there's going to be a wall of plants over there. And the whole idea is to screen for the neighbors and make sure no one parks over there and it's not a hangout spot.
So, that entire project and all the excitement that we've had through the last year or so, one of the biggest and first complaints I had
Was that?
Was the fact that I can't illegally park any longer along Ingham Hill, because they put the fence out there.
I had an email from someone I know pretty well, saying, my father, who is older and doesn't get around very well, that was one of the few spots that you could watch his granddaughter play, because there's not good handicap parking, and it's too far for him to walk. And he could watch the games from there, where do you now want me to have my father watch the games? So, I think, and that was sent to Jane and Julie too, and they worked on a handicap spot.
And the athletics director has determined that they're going to shuttle people.
Yeah, I saw them do that with my corner and backboard.
So, you know, when we have mind your way, there are going to be parking spots right there, because they're very accessible. But they also don't want, so whatever they're going to do.
So, one thing that I promised Chris Costa, because there's plenty of town, the town gets approvals and the town doesn't necessarily play by the rules, and she said that has historically been the case. I told her, we will make good on all our conditions. The schools changed a lot of their lighting, I don't know if you were aware of that, to dark sky lighting, so that it's down. You know, they changed a lot of their lighting on their building to make it compliant. We have to put in another, like 15 trees on Route 1 to be compliant, you know, Route 1, by McDonald's, between McDonald's and we're playing.
You can't see them, they're out there.
And that is just in the town's regulation, and it was part of the conditions, and so we are going to do it. I only plant trees in the fall, so those trees aren't going to get planted for another year, but they'll get done. But there's going to be a lot of arbivores, and they're already pretty big, these are like eight footers that we bought. So, that is going to be a complete wall over there of arbivores. And that's, that was his only condition of getting this done.
So, are they arb, like, are they regular arbivores, or are they something, because I know that the deer will eat the,
I don't know the lower part of the arbivore, which doesn't eat a very attractive green screen. Yeah, I, you know, that did come up, I don't know if these are deer, I'm not sure, I'm not sure. And also, just as a side note, we also planted 11 trees over the course of the last week, where I took some trees down. So, I try to put trees in the ground where trees have come down, and, you know, I don't think we make as big a deal about that, but I planted four elms and six, six maples and a dogwood, so. And let me tell you, it's not easy to get people, you know, when I run around town with a dog or whatever, I look for areas where there's a run, where there's no wires above, and it's open space. And, you know, people don't often, it's remarkable, people don't necessarily want trees, and they definitely don't want oak trees. And Kathy Connelly emailed me, she said, why aren't we planting any white oaks? And I'm like, of all the trees people will accept, they don't want oaks, which may be a bad thing, but they are receptive to elms and maples, anyway. Blah, blah, blah. I mean, we certainly take down plenty of trees every year, but good to get them in the ground. It's expensive, it's an expensive proposition to do both. Approval in the minutes from October 11, 2022, is there a motion? I'll make that motion, second. Any comments, corrections, there you go, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. So. So I thought I'd just put all these, thought I'd put all these grants before us, and just get this done. All right, so, I'm going to make a motion that we approve a $500,000 appropriation and recommend that the Board of Finance make a, or 500,000 appropriations to the Board of Finance, and that they appropriate said funds and move it to town meeting. Said funds to be reimbursed to the town, and these funds are for part of the project at, for sidewalks from Old Post Road to the Westbrook Town Line. So I'll make the motion for discussion purposes, just a second, okay, same as Scott. So, any question on that, reimbursable grant, not a pre-funded grant? The lots of grant that we did North Main Street with was a pre-funded grant. Typically, I haven't gone to town meeting, we don't get a lot of those, but I haven't gone to town meeting almost. And I think the connectivity grants are pre-funded grants also. Once you have a bid, the state just shows up in your account, it's a beautiful thing, it doesn't always happen, so. On all these other grants, as a, so, any questions on this, I mean, pretty straightforward, I mean, steep grants. All right, here you go, all those in favor signify by saying aye. And then, the legislative earmarks. If I was a betting man, I'll leave it up to the board, I don't care, if I was a betting man, I'd say they're going to be pre-funded, but they told me they're not sure what they're going to do. You guys have a preference, I mean, there's no harm in having it go to town meeting?
So, when you say, when one way or another, we have it reimbursed, one way or another, right?
Well, one way or another, it's either going to be show up in our account before we do the work, or show up in our account after we do the work.
Right, so the only thing that we want to do is make sure the money is available when it's needed.
The only thing I want to do is make sure that if, if these legislative earmarks end up being reimbursable, we're going to have to go to a town meeting at some point down the road. So I'm thinking, why not just get it done, it's in the, you know, it'll be done forever. If it gets pre-funded, we may have done something we didn't need to do, but there's no harm in a follow either. There's no harm in getting approval at the town meeting.
Yeah, I don't think that there's a problem getting approval, and I think actually, when you talk about both projects in front of the group, it'll be less confusing than if you're calling a meeting a month later.
And that's the other advantage, is you go to town meeting and you explain it, the Harvard News will probably cover it, the people will understand it what the money's for, so, all right, so with that, I will make a motion that, it's another, there's a $500,000 earmark that the, that we recommend to the Board of Finance, that they approve a $500,000, $500,000 for a project that is entitled Main Street Connection Part Phase 2, which will involve a lot of site work, sidewalk, and some other improvements. And that is the phase two behind the pickleball courts, any questions on that? That's a motion, by the way.
I'll second the motion.
So this is the earmark that we received in March.
Yeah, this was the older, yeah, the older one.
Then nothing, I have no authority to do anything on it. I really don't know what to do, but anyway. That's 500,000, any questions on that? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, and then, the last one is that the Board of Selectmen recommend to the Board of Finance appropriation in the amount of $769,500,000, which is, which was awarded to the town as grant in aid funding through the state of Connecticut, DEEP, for a sidewalk project to assist in building sidewalks from Old Post Road to the Westbrook Town Line, conjunction with a steep grant. And that, that ultimately be moved to town meeting, is there a second with that, second? So, that project all in is 770,000 plus 500,000 plus a town match of about 340,000. Hopefully, that will be enough. Again, there's no authority to move forward on any of this right now. So I saw the governor, he was at Sabre Point Inn last Friday for a tourism conference, he came down, Stefanowski came down two months ago, governor promised to come down, it was the day of the Bristol funeral for the officers. And it's funny, because the governor is, he can come across as kind of a goofy guy. And it's funny, because the governor is, um, he can come across as kind of a, a goofy guy, you know what I mean? Um, but he was definitely more sounder, um, after attending those ferros, you can only imagine, I can't even imagine. Uh, it was nice, I met his wife, I hadn't met his wife before, even though she was at the K that night, uh, for the gala, um, but the governor was there. And, you know, he saw me, I was with Norm, you know, and, and. So he was talking to us, and he said, how's it going down here, you know, things getting done, I said, yeah, you know, you've been, you know, the state is. We appreciate your support of Old Saybrook with various grants, and he said, I have, I said, I don't want this to sound like a complaint. He said, but it's been very difficult getting authorization to move forward on some of these projects. And I, I was just like, look, you got a lot on your plate right now, in the middle of an election. He said, it's not a complaint, he goes, well, yes, it is a complaint, and I said, it's not, I'm just saying, maybe when things, when everything, the dust settles. Um, that is something that all of us can work on is, because it can't be just Old Saybrook. Yeah, there were all, there were pages and pages of legislative earmarks, there has to be other towns. That are struggling with moving forward, and you can't move forward without, um. Uh, an agreement with the state, in fact, when you get the award, it basically says you're not to spend any money or commence any work. Until you have authority to do so. I have all my contacts that I'm emailing, I'm trying, you know, I don't wanna, I'm not trying to. Roughly feathers necessarily either, but I am doing some gentle contact with these people. Um, uh, which I'll probably do again on November first, kind of been my thirty-day tickler. So, anyway, I'm just rambling on at this point, um. So anyway, it's been moved in seconded, uh, I'll take these to the Board of Finance for next Tuesday, um. They do not have to come out of the capital non-recurring account, um. It'll just come from our reserves and they get back into reserves. Uh, we need to vote, what, we can vote? Yeah, I know, all those in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, just one other, oh, we'll do one more thing, um. Donna Lee, uh. Would like to be reappointed to the Conservation Commission, to your term due to expire, I think Donna's an ability voter. She's also on ARB, um, so I'll move Donna Lee's, do you know Donna, anybody? She's nice, yeah, she's a former, I think, principal or superintendent. Um, she still works a little bit, but she likes serving on these committees and committees, good attendance. So she shows up, which is important, so, uh, is there a second to that? Second, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One last thing, uh, we did have a, an employee. Uh. Give her notice yesterday for a better opportunity, uh, Becky, so. Becky, Rebecca, um, Becky, she works in the fire marshal building office a little bit, and in the assessor's office.
Okay.
She's been going to school to get her assessor's license to be certified, and she. You know, there's not a lot of opportunity here at the moment, and she got a job as an assessor in a, in a town. It's what she's been, you know, I saw her today, congratulated her, it's been what she's been working hard towards. She passed all the tests and, uh, she will now be, she didn't tell me what town, it won't be hard to find out, I am certain. And she was just like, I'd rather not say, um, I'm sure we'll figure it out. But, uh, assessors are, there's a need for them, assistant assessors and assessors. There's a shortage, there's a shortage, as I've said to you before, building officials, fire marshal, and even assessors, so, um. Good opportunity for her, she's moved on, we've advertised the job both internally and externally. We have to advert- advertise internally for thirty hours, uh, uh, internally for union members. And then, uh, but we, since we're, we have a pretty good sense for who might wanna take it internally. We're not sure we're gonna get a lot of takers, so we do it on a parallel track. Obviously, if we have a qualified internal person, that person will get the job. Um, but. We, we were advertising at both widths, um. One other thing we are getting, we have two, I think, pretty viable applications, we have an opening for maintainer two. Larry's been without one guy, uh, operating with one guy less, uh. It seems like that we've got better applications, and this is the third time we've gone out for it. We have so, a couple new guys, and they both were promising, um, so Larry's pretty happy about that, I'm interviewing one of them tomorrow at eleven thirty. Just meeting him for the first time, um. You know. We'll see how the job market changes over the course of the next year, you know, um, but, you know, it's economy seems to be here already. Anyway, um. With that, uh, I guess we'll suspend the meeting until, for twenty minutes, until five o'clock. And, uh.
Sounds good.
So, oh.